Good to see everyone. Welcome to the Audit Subcommittee of the Springfield City Council. It is now four o'clock on December nineteenth and we will get started. We are joined by Counselor Allen, Counselor Govan, and believe that is it from the council. Order to know, I will turn the floor over to you. I believe the first item of business is the end of the year report.
Oh, no, I, I believe it's the audit. City Fleet Management.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. You, you've got it in front of you. I'm gonna let you roll with it.
Okay, so I'm just gonna share my screen if I could. Go here and so everyone should see this audit report here. It says, um, audit of City Fleet Management. So, um, first of all, I wanna thank Chris Signoli and his staff for their cooperation during the audit. Uh, we did this audit as part of our fiscal year, uh, twenty-two audit plan. And the objectives of the audit was to assess the internal controls over, uh, City Fleet Management. So our scope, our scope included fiscal year twenty-two to, um, September twenty-twenty-three and did not include the fire department or the Springfield Police Department. Uh, those two departments manage their own fleet. I, I do wanna, uh, uh, note that, uh, even though they manage their own fleet, fire employees, they do, uh, use the fuel depot, uh, at, um, DPW, which is part of this fleet audit. Um, just to give you a background on, um, the city's fleet management, so, um, the city, uh, fleet manages about six hundred and, um, forty-five vehicles and pieces of equipment. And you can see the types of equipment listed on page two here. They have, they do approximately twenty-nine hundred repair orders. Uh, they have a general fund budget of one point six million and an enterprise fund budget of one point five million relating to a solid waste. They have about sixteen, um, full-time, um, employees, which consists of nine mechanics, two storekeepers, a foreman, uh, an assistant fleet manager and a fleet manager. Uh, actually, it's actually fourteen positions, that's sixteen. And they're located at, um, um, Tapley Street. And they have, uh, at that location, a fueling depot. Uh, this is where, um, city employees go to, to fill up their, um, fuel uh, for their city-issued vehicles. So for FY twenty-two, the city dispensed, uh, five hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons of gas, which equates to approximately one point eight million dollars. And, um, the, the fleet department, um, bills various departments that uses fuel. And which includes some departments outside of the city. Um, I think they include, um, uh, Housing Authority and the Business Improvement District. So, uh, with that said, uh, what I'd like to do is go into the findings, well, actually, before going into the findings and recommendations. We did make a change to our report, just to, uh, help management, um, focus on those recommendations that are high priority. Uh, so we color-coded, uh, our recommendations, so to provide a roadmap to management, uh, to focus on those, uh, high, high, um, categories first, then moderate, then low. Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll go into the actual findings on page five. So what I'll do here is I'll, I'll present the findings and recommendations and I'll ask, uh, Chris to chime in on some of his, um, planned remediation. So, um, finding one has to do with, um, yes, automated controls built into the, uh, fueling, uh, software. So you're a city employee, you're issued a fuel fob. And, uh, that fuel fob has built-in limitations in terms of how much fuel you're allowed to receive at any one point in time. So when you go into filling up your vehicle, you swipe your fuel fob, it recognizes your, um, you know, who you are. We gotta punch in the, uh, punch in your, um, mileage, uh, your current mileage. So the, the, the system says, uh, no one person can get more than like three hundred and fifty gas per fill-up. So, um, what we noticed, it, that's a good control mechanism, because that's an automated control that prevents people from taking too much gas. Um, so we noted that this control mechanism wasn't in place for every vehicle. And the way we noticed that is like, uh, we looked at, um, some fuel reports and noted, um, you know, um, they're supposed to have beginning mileage and the number of mileage, um, driven. So you can see here, there's some negative mileage here, and I think this vehicle pertains to the school department. And there were some beginning readings that were just left blank, which, uh, is problematic. Uh, they're saying, it, it's just telling me that people aren't typing their, typing in their correct fueling of mileage to get the total mileage or, or the beginning odometer readings. So, uh, our recommendation is, look guys, go through your Gas Boy, which is their fueling system, and, um, ensure that everyone has this built-in control mechanism in terms of the number of gallons they're allowed to, uh, obtain. Now, there, there might be some exceptions for, um, police, uh, or fire, uh, public safety, because uh, you don't want to prevent them from, um, I guess, getting gas in emergency situations. Uh, but, uh, all other departments should have this control mechanism, um, um, adhered to. So Chris, I'll turn it over to you to see if, if you wanted to add anything here.
Yeah, Young, thank you very much. Uh, I just wanted to add on, on this particular item. Um, on the, on the gas fobs, as Young mentioned, we have vehicles and it's programmed. Uh, for example, I drive a, uh, an Equinox. I can't go up and get sixty gallons of gas uh, at a time. Uh, it's set for a particular amount for that particular vehicle. Uh, police department has a number of undercover vehicles that aren't necessarily assigned to a vehicle. So in some of the stuff that Young was referring to, we have a number of police vehicles. We also have a handful of vehicles that have, uh, older vehicles that have some broken odometers that we are in the process of trading in. Uh, so we've taken that control off of some of those vehicles on there. And, uh, what we've done is we reviewed the report that, uh, Young gave us and went back through. Uh, and there was a handful of vehicles that were in maintenance mode. And when they're in maintenance mode, uh, some of the controls get turned off. Uh, and even though when we were looking at this report, even though there's not mileage in there because it was in maintenance mode, no mileage is recorded. So we had a handful that were in maintenance mode, which we took out and that has been addressed.
Okay. So I'll move on to the next finding and recommendation. At this fueling depot, there are cameras deployed. I believe there are three cameras, uh, deployed by the fueling depot. So you wanna be, record people who are getting gas. Um, so we made selections of, of certain dates that we wanted camera footage, just to en- ensure, to review the camera footage. But we noted for many of the dates that we requested, the system was down. So the cameras weren't working. Um, in addition, for those footage we were able to get, we noted, one, uh, one of the three cameras deployed there was malfunctioning. So as you can see here, you can clearly see, uh, two, you know, clear shots of, um, footage, but this is, the third camera is, is blank. It's not working. So what we're recommending is the city replace these, um, malfunctioning cameras. Uh, it, it's, uh, I think it's important to, uh, ensure that, uh, you, you have cameras working in the event that you need to go back and obtain footage.
And which, uh, from my perspective, I, I have been pushing facilities and IT for a couple of years for upgraded cameras, not just at the fueling depot, but throughout Tapley Street. We have a problem there of illegal dumping that occurs. And a lot of the cameras that are on our site, they are motion activated. And we don't have a lot of exterior lights, especially at night. Uh, so when a vehicle can drive in, if it is not seen by the camera, even though there's motion, it doesn't pick it up. So we're working with IT right now on getting cameras out there that number one are not motion activated, but are twenty-four-seven operation. And number two, uh, additional lighting in and around outside of buildings, uh, so that we can get vehicle license plates when we need them of any and all vehicles that are circulating through our facility. And I'm working with, uh, Andy and Bob Holton on getting all those quotes at this point.
Counselor Hurst, I believe you're muted.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield said she's in the waiting room. Are you able to see that? I don't see it. I feel like I haven't run one of these meetings in a while.
Uh, I, I don't see Counselor Whitfield.
Yeah, that would be focused.
What I just, they, they just. Yep, she's in, she's in. Thank you.
Okay.
We can proceed, order to know.
Sure, um, I'll move on to the next finding, uh, and it's finding three. Uh, this, these findings have to do with, um, inventory issues, um, at, um, fleet management. So we noted that, um, fleet has a stockroom. They, they keep supplies there, uh, like cleaning supplies. In addition, they keep, um, yes, uh, equipment for their, um, tra- uh, truck, um, haulers, uh, there are dumpster haulers and there's snowplows. So these tend to be, uh, more expensive pieces of equipment. So a, an important, uh, component of internal controls is to have inventory records. What do you have? Right? So you, you, you wanna list of all those items that you have, so you can monitor the movement of that inventory. Uh, and you can do periodic, uh, inventories throughout the year, just to make sure that stuff isn't leaving without your, uh, um, knowledge. So, uh, it's very, uh, a lot of businesses have an inventory management system, uh, to make their operations, uh, more efficient, also a- as a control, uh, mechanism. We noted that the store room has no, uh, inventory management system. Uh, they, I think, I think they do a good job in, um, tracking the inventory, I think manually. Uh, but I, I really do think they, they need a, a, a more, um, systematic way to record the inventory, monitor the inventory, and do periodic counts against that inventory, just to make sure that, uh, there are no shortages, uh, of, um, inventory items. Um, Chris, anything there?
No, the, the one thing I wanted to add, from a pure inventory standpoint, Young is correct, we don't have a pure inventory system, but, uh, just as an example, if I were to bring my car in tomorrow and I needed new brakes and, uh, our fleet division had to order materials, uh, to come in, they get delivered, they get put on the vehicle. There is not an inventory, excuse me, an inventory control for that particular part or whatever that came in. However, associated with the work order for the work that we did, what was purchased and what was installed in the amount of time is located within that work order. It is not work, is not located within an inventory system. We do everything on our work order system through a, a, a program called Cartograph. And we're working with Cartograph right now to determine if they can do a, an inventory setup for us, uh, for our materials, uh, to be able to log them in and log them out, so that we have an electronic system set up, um, uh, for those systems. They are tracked as part of a work order system. It's not necessarily an inventory system.
Right, okay. Um, so I'm wanting to, um, be, uh, finding, uh, three B, and this has to do with, um, uh, inventory, in physical inventories being performed by departments, so, uh, fleet management has a roster of vehicles assigned to various departments. And, uh, we noted that, um, these act, these departments don't go and true up what they have, uh, assigned to them. A- as a result, we noted that there were like three trailers and one vehicle that could not be accounted for. Albeit, you know, the, these pieces of equipment and vehicle were, uh, many, many years old. Nevertheless, nevertheless, th- they had no idea what happened to them. So, um, that could be problematic, uh, if it were a persistent theme, but it, it wasn't. But nevertheless, we're recommending that, uh, departments on an annual basis do a physical inventory of what they have. So if there's something missing, they could look into it and contact DPW of, of, uh, the issue. And I think, Chris, um, you mentioned that, you know, uh, the Vehicle Review Committee was going to review, I guess, uh, uh, fleet rosters uh, with various departments.
Correct, that's, uh, one of the things when the committee ends up meeting again in the, uh, early part of next year. Uh, first thing we are going to be truing up is, uh, number one, assigned vehicles for take-home. And then vehicles that are assigned on a daily basis to people, uh, as well. One of the things that we found out, or that's happened a lot lately, is a lot of departments have been able to buy equipment through grant programs, uh, whether we're talking about, and I'm talking about non-registered vehicles. In some cases, that might be a trailer. Most trailers are supposed to be registered. But, uh, you know, mowers, um, uh, leaf blowers, things like that, that don't necessarily have to be registered, but need to be in our database. We had found out that a lot of departments were buying these and may have scrapped or turned in uh, an old piece of equipment, but never dealt with us on the new piece of equipment. So that's one of the things we're gonna be dealing with the departments on.
Okay. Uh, moving on, um, finding three C. Now, the, the, the City Fleet has a motor vehicle policy, and in this policy, uh, it states that, um, a, uh, usage analysis, uh, is supposed to be performed to, to determine the appropriate size of fleet at each department. So, uh, we noted that such analysis was, uh, was, uh, was never performed, nor, uh, was there a criteria, uh, established to determine whether a vehicle is underutilized. So, um, as we did our own analysis, uh, just using some benchmarks that other mu- of these penalties uh, use, for example, um, number of miles driven, uh, in a given year. So we, we, uh, looked at, um, all the cars that were driven and determined, uh, and looked at the mileage, and we noted that, that there were about thirty-five vehicles uh, that were driven less than three thousand miles. So if you use five thousand as, uh, a, a threshold on which to determine whether a vehicle's being used efficiently, you know, you could say thirty-five vehicles uh, are not being used, uh, as efficiently as a po- as possible. So, uh, we're recommending that, um, fleet start doing this analysis periodically to determine the appropriate size of the fleet at the city and establish criteria to use in, in, uh, making their analysis.
And to a, to a certain extent, we do that, uh, I should say, I do that as much as possible. We have been in the process of purchasing some vehicles over the last couple of years. And that has basically been the big discussion with the departments is, you know, just because a vehicle is X amount of years old and has X amount of miles on it, does it need to be replaced? Do you need it? Um, that sort of thing, but really, uh, you know, the, the Vehicle Review Committee has not met uh, for a while, and that is the, uh, uh, I would say the primary goal of what the Vehicle Review Committee is supposed to be is every two, three, four months when we meet is identifying needs, identifying vehicles that aren't needed, identifying needs of vehicles that need to be replaced for whatever reason, and be able to address that through the Vehicle Review Committee. So when we start meeting at the beginning of next year, um, we'll be, we're, we'll be going back into another round of both short-term and long-term purchasing. Uh, the DPW did a five-year plan, uh, last year that talked about vehicle replacement. Uh, so we have a program in place right now for replacement, and that also has to do with vehicle usage and assumed usage as we move forward.
Um, so moving on to the next finding, uh, this has to do with like data discrepancies, um, in complementary systems. So a- as I mentioned, um, the city uses, uh, si- fleet management uses Cartograph to track its fleet. And, um, they also track, um, those take-home vehicles that are assigned to employees. So employees, as part of their job duties, are allowed to take home vehicles. Uh, and your, um, fleet has a list of those individuals that have take-home vehicles. Departments, specific departments have their own list, list, and, uh, Human Resources and payroll have a list as well. Uh, the reason why Human Resources and the HR Department have that list is because the commuting miles or, or the vehicle you use for commuting purposes is taxable as a fringe benefit. We noted that, uh, the, the list compiled by these three departments differed. So, um, as a result, uh, we noted that there were some employees, uh, that weren't taxed or weren't paying taxes on the vehicles they were, uh, allowed to use. And you also had employees who were taxed that didn't have take-home vehicles. Uh, I think it was, uh, you had two, twelve employees that got a free benefit and four employees that paid taxes on friends that, uh, they didn't receive. So what we're recommending is fleet, compare the three lists and reconcile, uh, to ensure that, uh, the appropriate payroll of recording and reporting, um, is used by, uh, HR and payroll.
And, uh, one of the things I wanted to add to that, the reporting, uh, in charge, I'll use the word charge, that we are charged for the benefit of using a vehicle is actually done in, in a, in an rear for the previous year. Um, as an example, I have an employee that used a car, I'm gonna say in twenty, I wanna make sure I get my years right, in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, so at the end of twenty-twenty-one, when he filled out his paperwork, he's been charged for all of twenty-twenty-two for the use of that vehicle. Now he's filling out paperwork saying he didn't use a car in twenty-twenty-two, so moving forward, he doesn't have to pay. So one of the problems, I, I, I don't know if problem's the right word, but we do a reporting on this of the vehicle usage, uh, how much an employee used a particular take-home vehicle in December of every year, and that report goes into HR. So during a particular year, uh, in the past year as an example, two employees from DPW who don't use a, excuse me, don't use a vehicle anymore are still being charged, because they're basically being charged for the previous year. There were also a number of people in other departments that were either somebody retired and somebody was promoted to take that vehicle that we were not informed of on our list, uh, to have the proper employee on that vehicle. So when Young comes to us and says who drives or who takes home vehicle number, whatever, whoever that was in our list isn't the same person that that vehicle's actually dri- or who's driving it and/or may or may not be getting charged by HR for a benefit.
Okay. So, the next finding, uh, and, uh, this finding has to do with, um,
Just a quick question. Um, order to know, how, how are we rectifying that moving forward? I mean, that, that, that seems, um, seems a, a bit egregious that folks are being folks who do not have the vehicles any longer are being, um, yeah, what is it called? They're being, they're being taxed on the video, on the vehicles, or they're being?
Yeah, and you have some employees that are getting a free benefit.
And some employees are getting a free benefit. So, so how are we going to rectify that moving forward? Those individuals who have been receiving a free benefit and those individuals, uh, and, and vice versa, the individuals that. Go ahead.
So, uh, it's a matter of reconciling, um, of the take-home of vehicle list, is working with, we're recommending that, uh, fleet work with, uh, the departments to get an updated roster of all those, um, take-home vehicles. Then from there, once they have a true list, before the, uh, the calendar year ends, uh, cause thi- this has a IRS tax implication, they work with, um, HR to update that list, just to make sure that, uh, HR has the most complete list, uh, of take-home vehicles. So it's, it's, it's a matter of truing up that list before the calendar year closes out.
And, and one thing on that, uh, Counselor Hurst, uh, for example, if I stopped using my vehicle on December thirty-first of this year, I would still be charged all of next year, even though I didn't use it in twenty-twenty-three, because that's the way the benefit is laid out. Uh, it's not a one-time charge, and so it's basically when I filled out my paperwork for this year, it is, it's, or when I filled out my paperwork, it's going back in time for me to be charged for this year. You're always like a year behind. However, once an employee is assigned a vehicle, doesn't matter what department they are, if they are assigned to take-home vehicle, it is supposed to be in both HR and DPW's database. And I think where the discrep- excuse me, discrepancy came in, is a lot of the people that we have listed had either retired, been transferred, so when working with HR on a, you know, monthly basis or so, just making sure that that list is correct. That is also one of the items that we need to direct as far as our, uh, our committee getting together that, hey, you know, every couple of months, this is your true list, correct? And, you know, having departments swear to it at that time.
It, it's a fairly easy fix, Counselor Hurst. They, they just need to, uh, uh, get an update, updated list, uh, and work with HR, uh, and, um, updating that list before the calendar year ends.
So I, so one other question I have, and it might not be, uh, related to this particular, uh, bullet point. But, so the individuals that get to take these cars home, they, they, do we monitor? How do we monitor the mileage, or how do we monitor, I mean, are they able to just use those cars? Um, you know, at, at their will, to, like, in the weekend and off time, and, I mean, is that, is that what happens? And, I mean, is that, is that why we're monitoring that, the gas intake of those vehicles? Man, how do you?
The, the, the City, uh, Fleet Management, um, has a GPS system on most vehicles. Uh, they're in the process of converting GPS or installing GPS on all vehicles. So, uh, having GPS is a good, uh, a good mechanism to determine where you're going.
But, yeah, you're, you're quiet. What I wanted to add to that, Counselor, is when you are assigned a vehicle, it is only supposed to be used for city business. You can't go to Home Depot on Saturday, you can't go pick up a pizza. You are supposed to be only using it for city business. And, um, w- we do get complaints from time to time. Um, and, you know, we may get it from a resident who said, hey, I saw somebody driving a vehicle on this particular day. Once we know what the vehicle is, or we know where it is, as Counselor, as, uh, uh, Young stated, if you tell me that you saw a city vehicle on a Saturday, uh, Van Horn Park as an example, I can put a geo-fence around Van Horn Park for Saturday, and I can tell you the exact vehicle that was in there. And then we can go back to the employee and find out why were you there, what were you doing on a Saturday? Uh, and, you know, unfortunately, it happens from time to time, but the monitoring of the vehicles is now done, all done through GPS.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, this next finding has to do with, um, uh, a, a, a department not updating their fleet roster. So, uh, and informing DPWD, DPW, uh, or fleet management, uh, of changes to, uh, a fleet roster. So as a result, we noted that there were, uh, uh, fleet management had a listing of employee, thirty-three terminated employees um, and eleven retired, uh, employees on their roster. So, uh, this is, um, problematic, because, uh, individuals are assigned fuel fobs, right, in which to get gas. So these, these fuel fobs could be reassigned or could be used, um, inappropriately without DPW knowing about it. So we're recommending that, uh, again, uh, e- every department confirm their roster uh, regularly with DPW, and there'd, there'd be a workflow in Munis. So whenever someone leaves the city, that, uh, there's a, uh, an email going out to the, uh, fleet management saying this person has a, a fuel fob. We need to deactivate it. So when you have a fuel fob associated with a terminated employee, that fuel bob, you know, if someone can use that fuel bob. You know, if someone can use that fuel bob to get gas without being, you know, detected. Uh, cuz these fuel pobs have specific assignments to it and it's assigned to a terminated employee. Uh, as I mentioned, it could be used inappropriately.
And one of the problems that we have with that is that if an employee is, leaves the city for whatever reason. And there's a promotion, usually that promoted employee gets the old fob from the previous person. And then you have another person who gets promoted. So now you may have. Two or three employees, bad names associated with a fuel fob. The fuel is still monitored, the the fob is still intact, it's just all of a sudden assigned to a. Uh, the wrong person. Uh, so when we have an issue with it, we would be going after the wrong person. And the idea of a, whether a terminated employee or a retired employee. Is what needs to be conveyed to us by departments.
And the recommendation there is um, fleet working with departments. Uh, to confirm their roster periodically. Uh, to make sure that, you know, the departments are confirming uh, the people on their roster, so fleet could update their list regularly. Alright, so uh, moving on to um. Uh, the next finding, uh, and that has to do with um. As I mentioned, um, fleet management keeps their fleet in Cartograph. And we compared that um, fleet roster to RMB. So. In the state of Massachusetts, all vehicles are used on public roads are supposed to register. So we compared the um, RMB registration listing to fleet. And we noted there were some discrepancies. Uh, primarily, uh, we noted that there were some old trailers. That were were still registered on the RMB but weren't um, updated. Uh, uh, or were, well. There were some uh, trailers that were still in the RMB but not in Cartograph. So um, uh, I think the fleet manager never uh, informed. The RMB that these vehicles were dis- disposed of. Uh, we asked for the appropriate records or or the supporting documentation to support that these. Old trailers have been disposed of. Um, he couldn't provide them, uh, he forgot to uh, keep them. Again, it's uh, it's it's critical that uh, when you dispose of any asset. Uh, like trailer, car, vehicles, that there be. The proper documentation to support that you dispose of those um, assets accordingly.
And uh, just to to let everybody know, when a vehicle, city vehicles is shown in the system at the RMB. As active as far as registration. If we still show it active, but the vehicle's not around, we are not paying for registration. So there's no cost associated with that. Uh, but in inside of Cartograph, and this is one of the things we were going back and forth with Young. When we get rid of a vehicle for however we get rid of it, whether it is scrap or trade in. Or or a motor vehicle accident and the vehicle is totaled. Um, it's within Cartograph, but it's a little clunky where it is. As an example, when we buy a new vehicle. Uh, when we get the paperwork for the new vehicle, it will say that an old vehicle is being traded in. So that ends up inside the the uh, the system under the new vehicle rather than being in under the old vehicle. Uh, so we we're trying to fix that clunkiness. So when we go back and look at that vehicle, we can see where that was traded in. Or disposed of.
And and Chris, I believe you agree to to reconcile regularly, you know, RMB listening to Cartographs to.
Absolutely.
Looking to the very differences. So our our next finding. So I'm moving on, if there are any questions, I'll move on to our next finding. Uh, and there's some um, uh, I guess deviations from the the motor vehicle policy. So one of the items in the motor vehicle policy states that um. Employees who don't live in the city. Uh, and they use their take home vehicles to commute to their out of. Um, city resident, uh, they're supposed to uh, reimburse the city for that. Mileage outside the city, city's boundary. So um, that's never been happening uh, since this policy uh, was uh, in effect. So uh, as a result, uh, we estimated, you know, what dollar impact does this have on the city? So we estimated. It's about like twenty four thousand dollars annually that the city could uh, be reimbursed. Uh, from those non-city residents using city vehicles for uh, commuting uh, outside city boundaries. Uh, and and Chris, uh, I think um, you um, have a remediation plan for this?
Yeah, and just to go backwards a little bit, um, a couple of years ago, when I started doing some updates on the manual. This item is in the manual that the uh, vehicles that are. Uh, by uh, employees that are driven, that don't live in the city, that drive them. Excuse me, are supposed to be paying a premium. However, when I did all of my research through HR and through Comptroller and other departments. I found out that no, people outside the city were not paying a premium. And you know, as somebody who lives in the city, my feeling always was. Is that if you are, I'm gonna use the word lucky enough to be uh, given the opportunity to drive your vehicle. To and from home that's outside the city, you should be paying a premium. The average employee who lives within the city of Springfield. I I'm gonna say has a benefit charged them every week of anywhere between nine and fourteen dollars depending upon. The amount of use of that vehicle. What we are proposing is that anybody who lives outside of the city. And when I say nine to fourteen dollars, that's nine to fourteen dollars per week. So what the uh, agreed upon alternative for vehicle or for employees who live outside the city. Is that they will pay a flat rate of twenty five dollars per week to utilize the vehicle to go back and forth. To their home uh, uh, instead of just paying the flat rate as if they lived inside the city.
I guess my question is, why are we? Why are they allowed to take them outside of the city anyway? I got you, Council Whitfield. Um, why, why are we allowing them um? To take them outside of the city anyway?
For the list of employees, it is either going to be. Non, non-barg, most, I mean, I don't wanna say mostly, but non-bargaining. Uh, either department heads or deputies and or foreman. And it is either part of their union contract if they're a foreman. Or if it, they are non-bargaining, it has either been approved by the various department and or through the mayor's office.
So I I'd like to get that list of the individuals who have um. Who live outside of the city and are allowed to take their vehicles outside of the city. And if you could break them down by those who have it included in their contract. And those who are non-bargaining employees. Uh, if we could, um, is that possible, order to know?
Do, Young, do you have that as part of this?
Yeah, Chris, I can send you the list. Uh, if you could true it up, cuz uh.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm just going at a particular point in time. You have the the um, the classification of whether they belong to the union or not, but.
Oh, yeah, I can figure that out. That's not.
Yeah, I'll send you my list, Chris, and and you can do it and and update it as needed and send it to.
Sure, and once he gives that to me, counselor, I'll forward that to uh, uh, to the committee.
Thank you, uh, counselor Whitfield. I'm sorry, we're also joined by Counselor Whitfield. I don't think I recognize you, counselor. Counselor, the floor is yours.
I think you asked the same question I was gonna ask. And it'd be like, couldn't they park the vehicles at Tapley and then take their vehicles home? Um. And I wanted to know the same amount of, I I have the same question. It's like. Who are they? How many employees um, actually drive their vehicles out of the city? So.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll give you that list.
What about parking at Tapley? Could they park at Tapley and then take their vehicles home? Like, is that an option?
For, well, in in the way that we've always done it, I I shouldn't say we've always done it. The individual departments go through the approval process for their people. Inside of the DPW, the only, I'm gonna say, non, non-bargaining people who have vehicles. Are a handful of foremen for us who are always on call. Uh, particularly traffic. So um, how? How that works in other departments, I don't know. Could they be parking a vehicle, whether you're talking about the park department at Wars Park or, you know, facilities department somewhere else? Always a possibility.
Okay, I was just wondering if that might, you know, save us from losses and also save them money out of their checks.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, and I'm I'm also thinking even for those people, like if they're, if they're always on call. I mean, I I'd be curious as to how often. You know, they end up having to go from the residents outside of Springfield to uh, to Springfield. And then whether there are other ways in which, you know, we can reimburse those individuals. For for having to actually come as a matter of work, but uh, come to the city as a matter of work, but. Okay, sounds good. Are there any other questions?
Um, for that mileage from going from home to pick up the vehicle. I don't, I don't think they would be reimbursed for that, not even tax wise. That's just a normal part of riding the work.
Right, it's like any other employee.
It's like coming to work.
So they would be on call. I'm I'm just thinking for those that would be on call, you know, that are on call, that are not, you know, that that. You know, cuz I guess the issue is that they they have them because they're on call and, you know, you wouldn't. Yeah, anyhow, let me think it through, but um, seems like it, there should be a better way. Uh. But okay. Order to know.
Uh, so I'll move on to the next finding. Uh, it has to do with um, departments complying with the motor vehicle policy in that they're supposed to. Confirm that they reviewed uh, the fuel report by signing off on it and providing, providing their. Uh, sign off to the fleet uh, manager. And they're supposed to provide a, a, a listing of their roster uh, every month with their signature. Uh, that hasn't been happening. So again, it's just a matter of enforcing this policy by fleet ma- management uh, on the, on the various departments. Uh, moving on to the next finding, uh, finding C, uh, um. This finding has to do with the vehicle review committee. Uh, Chris had mentioned this body, but uh, this body is. Has oversight of the fleet levels uh, at the city, uh, along with approving uh, new vehicle assignments. We noted that this body is non-functioning. They haven't met since, I think, what Chris significantly had told me, two thousand fifteen. So we're recommending that this body uh, convene and start. Uh, reviewing fleet levels and complying with the uh, policy. Or, or, you know, um, you know, revise the policy, but I'll let Chris talk to this.
Yeah, it is, it's also the committee's job to be actual, the final approval for take home vehicles. And since that committee hadn't been meeting. You know, we, we wouldn't know if people had been approved for take home vehicles, number one. And then number two, being able to know if they're being charged for them properly. And but the real thing for the committee for me is putting together the plan for. Purchases and oversight of the number of vehicles that we have. So um, I've definitely been pushing that through the various departments. Uh, to make sure that we can re- reconvene in uh, uh, late January to get that committee back together.
Okay, so um, next finding, uh, this has to do with uh, the fleet manager's responsibility. So um. We noted that this fleet manager has a conflicting responsibility in that he has uh, access to fleet, which is assets. And also has the ability to record, um, you know, fleet inventory. So whenever you have the ability to, whenever you have the ability to record and have access to assets. Uh, creates a conflict because you could delete an asset and mod- and modify the report. So you wanna segregate those responsibilities as best as possible. If you can't, then you need another person to oversee what this person is doing. So what we're recommending is that um, DPW Finance, they have, I think, the budget director be involved in reviewing. Uh, the fleet managers' work uh, by comparing, you know, the fleet roster to uh, the RMB. Um, um, scheduled RMB registrations, just to make sure that they're all vehicle, all fleet is properly recorded. Finding seven has to do with uh, GPS. We, as I mentioned, GPS are installed in uh, most vehicles. But there are some departments that have not yet implement, uh, have uh, have GPS installed. I I think those include uh, parks. And I think management uh, at building code and am I missing any other departments, Chris?
Uh, it was parks and a portion of facilities.
Yes.
Which all of that at this point has been rectified. Starting January first, a lot, well, I should say a lot, all of the city vehicles had. Uh, three G GPS systems in them. We are and have been in the process for the last three or four months, replacing all of those. And adding them into every vehicle in the city that is allowed by. Um, contract. And right now, the only contracts that don't allow it. Uh, I believe are police and I think library. So all other departments at this point are having GPS installed on all vehicles, updated to four G. Uh. Excuse me, and all non-bargaining employees are ha- all vehicles that are driven by non-bargaining employees. Are having all of their uh, GPSs installed. DPW uh, building code, IT and Echo Dev are one hundred percent done. Uh, we are in the process of doing parks and facilities right now. So at late, by the first uh, week of January, all city vehicles will be upgraded to four G networks. Through Verizon, uh, we use GP, we use our GPS system through Verizon. All of these new GPS systems that we are getting are free. Uh, we're just paying a monthly fee for each one of those and those have all been added into the city, so. Uh, you know, beginning January first, any vehicle in the city with the exception of police and library, we are able to track.
And our last finding um, has to do with um, there are non-city employees. That are allowed to drive city vehicles, and this is over at the school department. So um, Sedexo is the vendor that's allowed to drive uh, city vehicles. They drive city trucks to make deliveries. I looked at, uh, looked at the Sedexo contract and the contract doesn't men- make mention of any uh, of uh. Their employees being allowed to drive city vehicles. Uh, the contract does state that. Sedexo employees do have automobile uh, liability to a million dollars. But that may not be enough for a catastrophic event. Uh, also. You know, i- if they're allowed to drive city vehicles, then the contract should specifically state. Uh, uh, you know, the terms by which they're allowed to drive city vehicles. Uh, we noted that if they, I mean, it's the, the monetary impact is not that. All that much. I think it's about ten thousand dollars in fuel that the city could save if Sedexo were to um. Use their own vehicles for uh, for delivery.
Interesting, um, okay, uh, a- actually, quick question along those lines. Have we looked at the liability or or any potential liability uh, for those individuals? Who um, are driving their work vehicle outside of the city? Is there any increased liability there? Have we done? Any research there?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, since I've been running DPW. No employee who lives outside the city has been involved in an automobile accident. Involving a city vehicle. To the best of my know, I might admit, unless I'm forgetting one, to the best of my knowledge, nothing like that has happened. We have had a number of accidents within the city for vehicle usage. But to the best of my knowledge, take home, uh, we haven't, we, we have not, in my eight and a half years, had to deal with anything like that.
That's great to know. Um, and I'm not clicking on all cylinders today, but it 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 seems to me. That we ought to, that we ought to at least look into it. Um, because if there is. Um because if there is increased liability, then that might even be more of a reason why individuals shouldn't. Take their cars outside of the city uh as well. And so I know we haven't had any accidents since you've been here, uh. Chris, I don't know how long that is, but um uh doesn't mean that there won't be one, so definitely look into it.
And one of the things that um it 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 is, it isn't discussed in this report, but. What we do every three months at the DPW, every accident. That a city vehicle is involved in, we uh hold an Accident Review Committee meeting. We go through all of the accidents and make a determination based upon the information provided. And just to go backwards, when an employee is involved in an accident, accident, they are required as part of the manual, they must. Doesn't matter whether it's a fender bender, uh I, you know, I just kissed your bumper, or I flipped the vehicle over. Must, 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 uh immediately contact the police department, must require, request an accident report. The employee must fill out an accident report. We then, based upon the the Accident Review Committee, make a determination. Whether an accident is deemed preventable or not. And if it is deemed preventable or not, and again, I can't speak for other departments. Uh vehicle or accidents that are turned to be preventable in my department. Uh discipline is immediately uh meted out, depending upon the severity of the accident. Um could result in termination, which we've had a number of those, depending upon the accident level. And or a suspension, depending upon, like I said, depending upon the severity. So from an accident perspective. Uh that's not really discussed here, but that is also another component of what we do through the Fleet Management Division.
Wanted to know, I know we're we're approaching five o'clock. I believe there's another meeting at five. Uh is that is that accurate? Council Whitford, I think it's your meeting at five, right?
And I actually have to go. I have a client, but thank you so much for this meeting. Thank you, Chris, and. It's at five thirty, counselor.
It's at five thirty, alright. Yeah, got it. Um Tim, did you have, did you have a question or was it to that point?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Okay, go for it.
You're making me dizzy walking around Tim.
The number of vehicles we have, um what was that number again, outside of police and fire?
It's at six hundred and forty-five uh vehicles and equipment.
And those are spread across all the other departments besides police and fire.
Correct, correct.
In order to get a new vehicle or um. You know, add a vehicle when there, where there wasn't one before, or replace uh an existing one with a new one, what's the process with that?
Well, the way that it has been happening, number one, it's supposed to go through the Vehicle Committee. But since that committee hasn't been meeting, what has to hap- what's been happening is somebody will contact me. And say, hey, this vehicle's falling apart. I need to get a new one. And then we review it, make a determination whether that is true. Is the vehicle in bad shape? Is it a, you know, the, is it reading, reaching the end of its useful life? And then step number two is the funding of it, because uh depending upon what type of vehicle. Uh that you're talking about, a trash truck is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You know, a dump truck's two hundred and forty, where a passenger vehi- vehicle might be twenty-five thousand. So we then have to go through the steps with regard to the finance side of it. So even before I go and start talking to TJ and or the mayor about how the financing may or may not be able to work. Um we then, we want to make sure that it is an actual need of that particular department for either a replacement. Or an added vehicle.
And the ultimate decision is the Hiring Department and you and TJ maybe?
But yeah, but well, basically for the use of it, the end decision kind of becomes me. Or the simple reason is that, yeah, they're gonna try and talk me into it. And again, a lot of departments say, hey, I got fifty thousand dollars in my budget. I want to go buy a new truck. Well, that sounds like a great deal, but you know. You may not need a new one, you know, it may need service, or it may just need. Or you may have other needs in the department that are first. So that's the reason, you know, when we did the five-year plan, that was, and which I'm happy to share that with you. Uh when we did that um a year and a half ago, uh that was what we were really deciding about. You know, when vehicles need to be replaced. It's hard looking out two, three, four years, but. At least getting a flavor of when we need to do stuff.
Yep. Do we have a, I mean, the number of six hundred and forty-five. Seems like a really high number to me, but I have nothing to go on, you know, I'm sure they're they're needed. It's just uh nothing. If you had said to me. Except for fire and police, what would you, what's the number of, and maybe except, you know, we took away the DPW. Um you know, vehicles like trash trucks and stuff. I would have said, I don't know, a couple hundred vehicles or something, and. Six hundred is astounding to me.
Well, the 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 thing, counselor, when you're talking about the six hundred, you're talking about. Uh you're talking about trailers, lawn mowers, uh leaf blowers, uh. Plows, individual plows. So all those things are rolled into the number of. Uh pieces of equipment, because every one of those pieces is registered. And when I say registered, registered within our car graph system as an asset for the city. So yeah, the actual number of a driving vehicle in the city, whether you're talking about a truck or passenger vehicle. Is probably closer to, I'm gonna say, three hundred or a little bit south of that. And then it's all the other pieces of equipment that go along with it.
We have that in our report. Uh I I stopped sharing, but on pay, I'll distribute the report. On page two, Counselor Allen, um. Will give you a breakdown of the types of vehicles and equipment that the city uh that the city has, wha- what makes up that six forty-five. It breaks it down.
With that email, with that email to us?
Uh I will email it after the the meeting for your information.
Thank you. Um and Chris, relative to the climate. I don't know what the climate planner, the climate change planner, I'm not sure I got the right name for it, but. Um do we have a uh policy of buying, you know, electric or hybrid vehicles, et cetera? Is that something that some, um how did, how is that?
There's, there's a number of components that go along with that. Number one. Excuse me, the main thing right now is vehicle maintenance. Uh to be able to deal with the maintenance side of a lot of those vehicles, which a lot of our employees have not been. Uh trained upon, and it's a very, very specific type. Number two becomes charging stations, and as an example, at Tapley Street. We were looking into, you know, we have a lot of passenger vehicle here, it's because you have code in building. Where there might be in DPW, there might be uh pickups, there might be thirty or forty vehicles here. That would then need to be charged, and then it's like, okay. At the end of every day, well, how's the priority for charging those vehicles? And how do we go about that? So that becomes a little bit of a test as well. And I've been trying to work with EverSource on trying to figure out what we can do for charging. And you know, if me and you are working as uh building inspectors. And we both come in at the end of the day, and both our vehicles need to be charged. But there's only one charging station left, and I get there before you. That means in the morning, your vehicle's not charged. So there's a little bit of that, that logistic then becomes a uh a different thing. On the state list where we buy vehicles, uh electric, hybrid vehicles are. On the list to be purchased. And probably ninety percent of the vehicles that we are purchasing as, because we're in a purchasing cycle right now. Of the purchasing vehicles that we are getting for uh passenger vehicles. Uh will be hybrids if we so choose. Uh so really, the logistics are the big problem right now, being able to to uh charge all these vehicles as well.
Yeah, I don't know much about them. I, but I was always under the impression that hybrids don't require that, that they. Um you know, li- all electric requires that, and I could be wrong.
And that's what we're trying to, because if we can get some of the higher, or when I say higher quality, the hybrids that are true electric and gas. Um that way, if an employee needs to take a vehicle out and it's gas and it can't be charged. We can still do that. Those are a little bit more expensive, but the logistics of still having those stations and the charging. Uh are one of the problems. I was doing a lot of talking with some other departments. That are doing it, and some, like the PVTA as an example, has a number of electric vehicles, and their. Their challenge is actually the charging of the vehicles is uh them trying to to figure that out and at the end of the day of trying to get a vehicle charged, so. It's more, it's not necessarily the cost, it's not the type. Service is one thing, but also the actual uh. Logistics of the charging is a little bit of an issue.
Yeah, I guess I understand that.
Yeah.
Um, okay, thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm all set for now. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Wanted to know, was there anything else on? The report?
Uh that's it for the report.
Okay, um, Chris, are there any other questions from counselors? Counselor Allen, I still see a hand, hand raised, I'm assuming.
Oh, no, I didn't take it that.
No, and uh what what Young and I went through on this, I don't, I don't have uh. Um anything to add on it, and uh. Uh a lot of the requests that uh Young was making were, we've been instituting, we've been working on this, Young, since what, beginning of? Middle of August?
Yep.
Yeah, so a lot of these things have already been put in place as well, so.
Got it. If you could just clarify for me, I can, um, the amount that folks are charged. Uh to be able to take their vehicles home, and why, uh quickly before we adjourn.
We just, as a matter of fact, uh in the last week or so, if you're an employee and you're taking a vehicle home, there's a form that you have to fill out every year. And that form has nothing to do with mileage. It has to do with the number of days that you use the vehicle. So for three hundred and sixty-five days, uh you then have to fill out this form that identifies specifically how many days you use the vehicle. And within, I believe, the Comptroller's Office, Young?
Yep.
Within the Comptroller's Office, based upon those days, that number is then calculated. That uh, for example, in my case, um. I can't find it. I want to say it's like eleven dollars and ninety cents a week. So that eleven dollars and ninety cents a week gets added to my paycheck as a benefit. And then at the end of the year, you end up having to pay taxes on that benefit. So you are not technically charged money, you are end up charged the tax on it, but it's the benefit that goes away from it. From the Comptroller's Office, from what I understand, they use, it's a, the the response that I got, it's a standard IRS. Uh amount that is charged for. Uh I don't, I don't want to say a municipal, but say federal and or municipal vehicles based upon the tax code. I may be a little wrong on that, but that's the, I'm not a tax guy, but that's the way it was explained to me by uh Pat Burns.
So are you giving, are you giving, just really quickly, are you giving the benefits so that at the end of the year, when you are taxed, it offsets? Is that, is that the idea?
No, you, what what you're doing, um then reporting the benefits, so you, so you have to pay taxes on that benefit.
Right.
I got that. Why are they getting the added benefit, though? I guess I'm a little confused as to why they're getting.
Because that commuting per, the miles used for commuting purposes, commuting purposes, is that, is personal. It has nothing to do with business. So I use my car to get uh from my job to my home. That's a personal expense. So that should not be, uh so you should be taxed on it. It's like income. So uh anything you use for personal purposes uh should be treated as income, and you should be be paying taxes on it.
No, I get it. I'm, I guess I'm missing, why are we paying the benefit to the people who who who? Who bring their cars home?
You're not getting paid. It just shows up on your paycheck as a benefit. There is no additional income.
I see, I see, I see, and so that it can be tracked in in terms of an amount. I got.
So at the end, at the end of every year, you know, say my benefit is a thousand dollars, I have to pay the tax on that.
Yeah, they still gotta.
I'm not getting the thousand dollars.
Got it. That just calculates.
If you want to give me the thousand dollars, I'll take it.
You're just calculating for tax.
To me, I'll take it too, Chris.
But yeah, it just shows up as a benefit. You are not getting any cash.
Understood, understood. Okay, um, all right. So are there, are there any other questions from counselors regarding this report? We're at the, go ahead, Counselor Whitford.
On it was just a DPW audit?
Yes, this was just a DPW audit.
Right.
Hey, I'm sorry. I have one more question. Why, why did you do the audit again? What was the reasoning behind it?
It was on our audit plan, so after twenty-two, we did an audit plan, and this is one of the audits we're supposed to do.
Got it. So if there are no other questions from counselors, uh order to know, I know I wanted to have a quick conversation. On the potential for uh an audit that is not. Um that has not been brought forward by your team, uh we we certainly can have another meeting. Uh on this, but in the event that I'm not the Chair of the Audit Committee next year. Uh I just want to make sure that it is, that it is on your radar. Uh the process for issuing raises to employees in the city of Springfield. Uh I brought it to your attention this summer, um and. We certainly haven't gotten to it yet, but I know firsthand of an individual that has yet to receive. Uh a raise at all, um and since, since she's been working. For the city of Springfield, and I also know that there are other individuals who have received. Multiple raises, and um you know, I just. It 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 seems like the process is not a fair and equitable process, and it's more about who. The department heads or who folks know. Um and from a department head standpoint, it's about who, which department heads are willing to lobby on. You know, on behalf of employees in their department. And to me, that just seems problematic, uh and it just seems like there ought to be some sort of set way in which. Folks um are receiving raises, so. Uh I don't, I don't think it's, you know, we don't have time to discuss it now, but you know, if, i- if we could think about it. It would be greatly appreciated, and if I am the Audit Chair next year, um you know.
On your other item, on on code, uh this is code certificate, that is on our audit plan, and we will get to it. Uh this.
That was already, that was already on your audit plan?
Yep, it's on our audit plan, and we're gonna get to it, so.
Was that on your audit plan prior to me bringing it to your attention?
Yes.
It was on prior?
It's prior to bring to my attention, so.
Got it, okay.
And we will get to it uh probably early spring.
Because it, you know, as, as I see it, we're losing out on a lot of money uh there as well, and so it just, it seems like that. Something ought to happen fairly quickly. So for those of you who don't know, uh it's those um. Folks are required to get a municipal, not folks, uh certain buildings and certain. Uh housing complexes are required to get a certificate of inspection. And there are a number of places that have not received their certificate of inspection. For, I'm sure, a variety of different reasons, but I have a list of over three hundred and eighty properties. And that, you know, they they get charged. Per, they get charged a standard fee and then uh extra, depending on the number of units that they have. And so, I mean, you can do three hundred and eighty bucks. I forget what the standard fee is, a hundred and twenty-five bucks. Uh I think, and then they tack on per unit. Uh and you know, you can just think about how much it's costing the city, so. That was one of the reasons why I wanted order to know to take a look at it. Looks like it's already on your radar, so appreciate it.
But in terms of the other project, uh the uh issuing pay, pay raises, um I I guess we'll think about it, but. Our audit plan for this year is just uh, it it's tight, um so we'll put it, we'll consider it on a future audit. Uh we'll do a risk assessment that I mentioned.
For twenty twenty-three, are you talking about, Young? Is your audit?
The audit plan, we have to come up with an audit plan for um twenty twenty-four. So we develop the audit plan, we're gonna, you know, take ideas or rep, you know. Recommendation or or request from various parts. Recommendation or or request from various parties like management, certain city councilors and the public. So we, we compile a list and do a risk assessment, wh- when we think about future audits, so uh this is.
I think this one is important, um if I may, Counselor.
Counselor, Counselor Whitfield, I'll. You'll probably say what I'm gonna say.
I think it's important, because I know individuals that work in certain departments where they do get promoted and they get raises. But it's not to the level that their counterparts get raises, and I'm just gonna come right out and say it is the minority employees. That feel like they are not getting um equitable raises as white employees um in the city of Springfield. Um when they get promoted, so I think it's important, I think there should be a scale. Um based on the time served and the knowledge of um employees in the city of Springfield. And they get paid based on a certain range, not just what department heads feel like they want to give them for raises. And I've gotten this complaint quite a few times from different minorities, even some of great workers that have left the city because of it. Because they, you can go right on, you know, the city website and see what other people are getting paid, because it's public. And they know that they're not getting fair treatment based on their counterparts, so I think that this is an important audit.
Uh I, I think, oh well, just to make mention here, I uh I think the city is going to do a, a pay equity study. Uh okay. Um soon, and also, you know, um uh we would only be looking at the process, we're auditors. We look at processes, uh now, uh in terms of, you know, things being, you know, um. To being treated equal or 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 things uh that may be deemed subjective, we're not in the best position, we're not experts. In this arena, so our, our skill sets may be limited in performing a, was it a pay like equity audit? And and if the city is playing on having one done already, uh I would, you know, certainly take that into effect, because I certainly don't. Our policy is not to duplicate efforts.
Well, part of the process could be, or a suggestion, is that if you're getting promoted and you're in, let's just say, category one A. Here's the range for one A, and then here's the range for two B, and whatever, whatever the scale is, there should be a range. And based on the level of service, years of service, experience, education, should determine what you're getting paid. Not, it shouldn't be as subjective as it is um for department heads to make that determination. That's just my suggestion, but I understand.
If I could just add, order to know that every time we do these audits. Uh and every time you audit, you know, a particular area of a department, the end result is what Chris is doing. And that is coming up with ways in which uh they need to rectify, you know, some things that they may not have known about. Previously, uh so as to save folks money uh in the long run. And um probably for a variety of other reasons. Uh I would argue that this is equally, if not more important. Because what it's gonna force folks to do is to actually take into account those particular individuals who they're overlooking. And um and I, I also think you're dealing with individual um with folks' lives, right? And for me, uh at a time like right now, where everything is sky high. Those raises that folks are not getting uh are extremely important. And when you look at the process, you'll see that there are individuals that have been getting raises at much higher rates. And so you don't have to dig deep into who those individuals are. But if you identify the, that the process is flawed, at the very least, you'll get folks to be looking inward as to how to rectify the process. And so I don't know how you prioritize what is important and and what should go first. And my opinion, this is extremely important, so uh with that being said, um. You know, we can, we can adjourn the meeting if there are no further questions from the council, uh but if I am the audit chair. Uh this, this, you know, um this will either be done privately or it will be done publicly. Um and it, either way, it has to happen, uh and it probably should happen, you know, sooner rather than, than later. Um and should be a priority. That being said, uh there are no further questions, then we can adjourn.
Thank you, Chris, for coming up with solutions um to the audit and definitely come and prepare. Um to discuss those solutions, we definitely appreciate that.
No problem, I thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank, good job.
Thank you.